I just turned to the camera. I'm trying to look for you. I don't know where you're standing. I think I, I don't need to turn this little garbage litter. I got out of that. My guess is still. Oh my gosh, we should, it's really interesting to try. Oh, they're all in each other's mouth. There's one. That's the question. Hello. Hello. Well, what we could do. How are you all? Go drop off my junk out, come back and talk. All right. Gary. Hang in there.
Yes, ma'am. Oh my gosh.
At least three dozen. Now we're talking the first round.
Well, it doesn't spell.
I know. I guess if we saw like the blue.
Yeah, yeah, it should be.
Okay. I know this one I was like. Just like a little. Email. These up, they're green, they're red. I'm like.
Close.
We're using. We're in the night. And. Yeah, it's nice, nice. Okay, so we're going to pull one that we gotta let you. With all the red and all the black. So especially the next one you'll get, you know, and that you took down. God, I mean, I took out all these. Yeah. So that's all I've done since I did stuff that, you know, uh, yeah, that's, you know, that's. Um, I got it today and it's quite a lot, so I need to go through all that. Yeah. A lot. So. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I never got to it yet, so I see. Are you, um, still paying?
Um, I know when I talked to Jen and then they didn't have time this week. I left her a voice message.
Okay. I'll, I'll start working on meeting pretty bad. You know, cases that we're talking about. Okay. So we're not really working from this so much as. There's a lot of cases. So. We're getting there. We're working through it. We got that one last week, so. Yeah, it's, yeah, but three things I think. Yeah. One was just a little phrase about, um. Like, God, man, that he says. He needs to stop, like, you're gonna pay for it. You're gonna owe him a relationship. Yeah. That's it. Yeah. And, um. Sanitary conditions. That one might end up being way.
Thank you.
More to. That's so helpful. That will give you a life to stand on for so many of the things that. Give you.
Anybody? Uh.
Yeah, that's the problem.
My mother was, uh, pretty wet last year.
He's like more. You know, they're all. This is, this is the section of the. Yeah. Okay. Some first off. Stuff that was long or late. It's like. Yeah, I'll be first to the.
Yeah. Yeah.
That would be great. It helps everyone.
Always next year. We're like a browser, it's always next year.
You can have some better success rates. It's a, that's a low bar, so.
I'm just saying, okay.
I think the mayor's not gonna be here till the full mayor.
Right. Like, I'm just saying, just. Yeah, I do need help right now, so. Do that. Full, full.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she, but she mentioned that. I found the other geezer, she. What? Maybe my mailman was definitely high, hopefully whatever. Proud, maybe. Yeah. He has to be all right, right?
Yeah.
We have a strict rule about that.
Yeah.
We'll start the public safety meeting here in just a few minutes. Okay, everybody. I'm gonna call the Public Safety Committee to order on October twentieth at six thirty-four P M. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Public Safety Meeting. I'll make a motion for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any comments or confusion or disagreement? None? All in favor? And that motion passes. The next motion I'd like to make is to substitute the latest T R N version from the Law Department that was dated ten thirteen as our new working document. That is the one that removes the responsibility of the city for financing this program.
Second. Is that, is that the one that's on?
That's the one that I.
With the agenda? Or that's the one you sent?
That's the one that I meant I sent to you and Cindy.
And it's the one in the agenda?
That's the one in the agenda, okay. So I'd like to make a motion to substitute that version as our working document.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any disagreement? And that motion passes. All right. So I wanna look at this document just for a minute. We have some of the members from La Swab and the community here. We have the Law Department and the Animal Control Officer, Mr. Crumley, are here as well. We're getting very close. I feel like we're getting close. And I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to Jennifer and Law Director Vargo for all your work and all your patience with this. We just wanna get this right. We just wanna get this right the way that, you know, we don't have to go, oh, gosh, we're gonna have to go back in six months because we missed something here. And I think with the input that we got from Dana Pinella at our last La Swab meeting, she gave us some insight into a couple areas that we definitely wanna look at. Specifically, unsanitary conditions, because from what I understand, there's still a problem on Davis Court, even though measures have been taken there to control the cat population. It's still out of control, so we wanna put some, some information together, some verbiage together to make sure that if unsanitary, unsanitary conditions are, are there, that we can do something about it. So that's, that's one of the pieces. And some of it was just some simple wording. One of the things that she had requested was if, if the animal control supervisor has to have a dog treated to save the life of the dog, then the owner has to pay for that when they come to pick it up. So those, those just kinda detail type things. So we have just a little bit of work to do left on this one, but I think, you know, moving to this version will give us, will give us a little more clarity and we'll add a couple more things. Do you all wanna say anything from La Swab? Go ahead, please come on up.
Now I'm supposed to make, you got it. Now it's supposed to stay green, right? Okay. I'm Nancy Binder. I am the Chair of La Swab. Our, we have a very engaged meeting on T N R. It's, it's a issue we have been working for over a year on. Lakewood is a city that's very condensed. We have a large population of cats. Find out how well doing a program works with resident cats. The problem with outdoor cats is they keep breeding, and that's one of the reasons for this ordinance. We had a couple of things in the ordinance you gave us that we discussed at the meeting, Cindy. I don't know if they have changed out, but I'm going to just do a short snippet of them.
Sure. Go right ahead.
Okay. On registration, the city wanted it required. You wanted it changed to recommended. Our board would prefer not having the registration at all because they feel it would turn away large groups and how do you control that? The other thing about registration is we have three A C Os. A town of our size for A C Os is having a group of three to five A C Os.
Tell me what A C O is.
Animal Control Officer.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. They're, they're backed up all the time. Gary runs a really good but tight ship. There's always something going on. There's always thirty cats or kittens or hopefully then another water berry beagle. Davis Court, which is what we always use as our example, because Davis Court got fed up with their feral cats, their community cats. They trapped, they brought them in, and by law Gary had to dispense with them. There are over fifty cats. You're asking a staff of three to do something that only a hard-hearted person could go do and not be affected by. And our A C Os are all very kind people. It is not the fun part of their job at all. But since T N R is to reduce the population, and it has, it does work. You T N R them, put them back in their colony. Colony dies off because they're not reproducing, and other cats in this way don't come in and repopulate the area. Right now, Davis Court is getting repopulated because a vacuum was made and cats are just coming in. The paperwork is something I think would be, and the board thinks, would be pretty onerous if we're doing large T N Rs, which is required to really get a whole colony. The funds that you said about getting out of the ordinance, it's probably best to have funds out of the ordinance, depending on how it goes. But there could be grants that could take care of things. The city could fund like they did the spay and neuter program as we have this. We have a population that over five hundred cats of residents couldn't afford to spay or neuter their own cat. They're not going to take their funds and spay and neuter a community cat, no matter how irritating it is to them. So I recommend that, not in the ordinance, but outside the ordinance, there's flexibility to get it subsidized in some way. And flexibility to have whoever writes grants for the city help us find grants. We, we know the typical ones, but there's always somebody underneath the surface that we would miss. Let's see. The, um. If the city does pay through these, one of the advantages is that to get the money from the city or the grants, they would have to apply through Gary. And that would give us a framework of what's being done, where is it being done, how's it being done? The training, since there's no official training site that gives, you know, here you've been trained, here's your certificate. That's a hard one on how do you show you're trained? How do you get it to Gary that you've been trained? There can be a link from his website and just say, here you go. It could have a little click on it that you've been there. Doesn't have to be official, doesn't have to be anything. But people do tend to think you put a trap out and come back in two days, which is not best practices. So those are the things La Swab had for your consideration, and I hope we get this ordinance through because it's really going to help the city of Lakewood and the residents of, especially Davis Court, where it's the area that we need to focus on right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. I did receive some of the language today from Dana Pinella on what she thinks could be helpful in this. And La Swab and I are gonna look at this together at the next meeting. Cindy, you're gonna be off the hook again. The next meeting, I'll, I'll go to that one, too. And then we'll work through that and see what pieces we can pull out of that for the unsanitary conditions and anything else that, that we feel like we're missing in there, that La Swab feels like we're missing in there. And then we'll have another version of this, and we'll look at it again at that time. Do you have any comments or questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I wonder, so, you know, I'm following the emails, but obviously we can't consult as a committee until we're all here. So I appreciate La Swab's work and A C O Crumley, Law Department, and you and my other colleague on the Public Safety Committee. I, I wonder if we can just get, seems like this registration point is, is kinda the one, right, that we're working towards resolution on? So I wonder if it can just be explained better so that we, as a committee, can kinda understand where La Swab's coming from and then where A C O Crumley's coming from? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, we had gone around that quite a bit. We had a long conversation about that in the La Swab meeting, and it's my, and you can please speak up if you'd like to. It's my understanding that any type of registration or any type of training is just not gonna work at all for, for the people that are doing this type of work. Come on up, Megan.
Hi. Hi. Again, I'm Megan Galata, the Community Cats Director for CLAWS, the Citizens Committee for Lakewood's Animals and Shelter. The one piece that I did want to add on to that is that required registration and showing proof of training is the piece that's not gonna work. We did talk in the meeting about a group such as CLAWS providing training for people, just that it should not be required in order to do T N R. So that was just a, a little piece. But the required registration and the required, show, the requirement to show proof of training are the pieces that we want struck. And that, from our perspective and representing what Dana talked about as well, is that there is no universal or national training program for T N R. We do know of a program. It costs money and it's only done once a month, so that's gonna be a barrier to people. As a community, we and even other T N R groups are willing to do training for people, but we just feel strongly that it shouldn't be in the ordinance required. And registration shouldn't be required because that's gonna be really onerous for people who are good Samaritans, doing this out of the goodness of their heart, with their own money and their own time to help the cats and ultimately help Lakewood and their neighbors. So that's that, the little piece that we talked about, required registration and showing proof of training is the piece that we don't want. And I believe that the language coming from Dana is going to include something like recommended, understanding of recommended best practices, something like that, so that people do actually know that there are best practices. They're not laws. They change like best practices can, but I think that's in the piece that she has sent as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Vargo, did you wanna comment on that? Or Jen?
Yeah, so I'll hand it over to Ernie in a minute. A couple of points I wanted to make. I believe in July of this year, we changed, and I'm not sure if this was completely circulated to everybody. I know it was circulated to members of this committee, that the application process would be a one-time annual registration. We can make that available online. We'll work with information systems to do that. Where, would require name, home address, phone number, addresses where they plan on trapping, and then, you know, an electronic signature. We removed the requirement that they show us proof from a property owner that they have permission to trap on that property. We understand why that would be problematic. That was a requirement that we were thinking of would be protecting the trappers, but if, you know, they're willing to do that, we're fine with that. And then the only other requirement for, um. For registration is that at some point you let us know if there's other addresses that are being trapped, and that can just be a simple email to one of the animal control officers. So that if they get a question from a resident about something that's going on, then they can respond appropriately that we know this is part of a T N R program. They're permitted to be doing this with the permission of the property owner. On the training, we also have changed that. We heard that complaint early on in the process and changed it from a certificate to a training as approved by the animal control supervisor. So that if somebody says, hey, you know, shows a printout from, I went to this seminar, that if he's comfortable with that, then that's okay. And I believe it was Ms. Binder that talked about best practices. If there isn't some sort of training, even if it's just a pamphlet that we create that somebody signs off on and says that they've read and reviewed, how do we know that folks participating know what the best practices are? You pointed to, you know, leaving an, an animal in a trap for two days, which is not ideal. I just feel that we need to have some minimum regulations. We've, we met with CLAWS and La Swab probably going on three years ago when we first, when they first came to us wanting to have a T N R program. Sat down with all the groups, came up with our policy that was implemented at that time. Obviously, after time, there's things with that policy that's not working, which kind of spearheaded this conversation. And, you know, we've had multiple conversations in committee. I've met with Councilmember Strebig. I attended virtually an El Swab meeting in which I believe Megan offered to help us provide training, some sort of a video that we could have people watch, and that would meet our minimum qualifications. And I know Ernie had some comments as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson. This ordinance that's drafted, the required registration, let's just talk about that. I can't emphasize enough that has nothing to do with anybody here. Has nothing to do with C. Claws, La Swab, or good people who are going to do this out of the goodness of their heart and in the best interest of the city. Has nothing to do with them. If it were just them, we wouldn't have registration. We, we wouldn't need anything. We just had cybersecurity meeting. We wouldn't need that for anybody in this room because nobody's gonna hack anything. It's for the bad actors. The Law Department is simply trying to protect the city, cat owners, cats, from potential bad, bad actors. Or perhaps people who are careless and negligent, who don't, don't take this practice nearly as seriously as they should or like these good people would. So we have a very basic, non-objectively burdensome registration. As Ms. Swallow said, name, address, phone number, and where you're going to be trapping. Sign and date. Not onerous objectively. If this deters some bad actor or careless actor out there, that's great. That's the intent. If some modest training that we're talking about deters the bad actor, the careless actor, that's what we're focused on. So we're talking about the, the bad actors. We're not talking about anybody here, certainly not Megan when she says it's burdensome. We wouldn't put any burden on these people. We're just trying to protect the city from those who might have ill intention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You wanna speak again, Megan?
With all respect to you guys, there was a very long and very detailed meeting where Dana Marie Pinella of Holland Mearden, Holland and Mearden Experts in Animal Law in the State of Ohio came to speak at the La Swab meeting. She is an expert in this. She also represents Alley Cat Allies, the nationally recognized group, if not internationally recognized group, for T N R. Ms. Strebig put it on to Mr. Crumley to, and you guys, to talk to her because she addressed all the reasons that registration is not going to work. You may feel it's not onerous. I'm here to tell you it is. And I want you to understand very clearly, as someone who has been doing T N R in Lakewood for over a decade and has been very actively doing it since January twenty twenty-four, that I will not continue to T N R in Lakewood. And my friends are not gonna T N R in Lakewood if registration is required and if any kind of proof of training is required. I gave a very impassioned speech at that meeting. I wish you could have attended it. And we had an expert attorney come and speak. She deals with things in Cleveland, cases against people with dogs. She deals with all cities. She has helped develop ordinances across the state of Ohio. Registration is not gonna work. As she explained, it will have a chilling effect on T N R in this city. Ask Mr. Crumley how many kittens have come into the shelter this year. And that's after I T N R'd all last year, except for a few months when I couldn't do to my mom's health condition, and other people are T N R'ing. The weekend before the La Swab meeting, somebody had trapped eight or nine cats. They did not tell Mr. Crumley it's already happening. This bad actors does not happen. And as Dana explained, you have other pieces in the legislation, in the ordinance, to deal with it if it does. She provided a whole huge document of model language that can be pulled upon. Much of it improves things that Lakewood's ordinance doesn't even have now, that doesn't even give Mr. Crumley permission to do things he needs to do. I indicated in that meeting, and I'm gonna indicate to you now and indicate to this committee, I don't want this to be seen. committee, I don't want this to be seen as a warning, because that's truly not how I intend it. But we have tried and tried and tried, and you just heard the Chair of La Swab give her recommendations out of that meeting. You just heard her say it. Next time, I will figure out what meeting it's going to be, and we will fill this room. We will fill this room, and we will have the media here. Because we feel that strongly, we need TNR in Lakewood. There are cats everywhere. You need people in Lakewood to say, I've got a couple cats, I can do this. Or another group, say somebody in Columbus, or Riggy Rescue in another city, or CLAWS, or Lucky Paws, another rescue, to say, we can come in and we can do these three streets. No one is going to do that if they're being required to register. No one. And I can fill this room with people who say that. And trust me, I don't want that to be a threat. I'm telling you the reality of what you're looking at doing. We need people to TNR. Please, stop micromanaging it. Other cities that don't contribute any money, no staff to TNR, they don't have these rules. Find other cities that are doing nothing that have these rules. They don't exist. They don't exist. And I know that Dana is ready to speak to you guys at length about that, about best practices for municipal ordinances. No other cities require this. It's micromanaging something that doesn't need to be micromanaged. We've already offered to do training.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, we did have a lengthy conversation about this, and I agreed to look at the recommended language and have La Swab look at this recommended language from Dana Pinella and pull some new verbiage out of that. So we'll do that as a next step. And if anybody has any other questions, we can pursue that, or we can table this until the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. I do sense, you know, some consternation, and I, you know, I think the law department is good at their job, they're trying hard, and you all are excellent volunteers. And so I don't, you know, I think you should direct your ire at us, you know, not the law department, we're the electeds in this room, and we can handle it. So that's all I'll say. And we have a duty to figure this out, and you can take your input, take the law department's input, and try to come up with a good, you know, ordinance. But it's on us, so please direct it to us. Thank you.
Do you want to add anything?
No, just that I think that we just need to continue to evaluate this and...
We'll keep working on it, because I hear it from both sides. Well, nobody does it this way, nobody does it this way. Somewhere in the middle, we're going to, we're going to figure this out. And recommended training was something that Megan had agreed to do, and, you know, maybe that ends up being a pamphlet too. I don't know what that ends up being. And maybe La Swab can start putting together some ideas for what training looks like. All right, good. Okay, with no further questions, we're going to move on to our communication from Fire Chief, the floor is yours.
Am I on? I'm on, okay. Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The purpose of this presentation is just to inform council of our upcoming fire engine purchase, that I will speak to it a little bit more. It is in our 2028 capital plan. I just want to explain how the process goes, how we determine what Lakewood needs, and just how that decision is made at the end of the day. So I'll give a little bit of background of how we replace vehicles and how that process goes, our capital planning process. We do have an apparatus committee, which is made up of a varied group of folks within the fire department and in the city. It includes Captain Joe Colley. He is the chairperson of that committee. We also have our three shift mechanics. There's a shift mechanic on each of the, there's A, B, and C shift. We have a firefighter that's detailed as a mechanic to each of those shifts, so they have input. We also have someone from the EMS side. We have an EMS coordinator that provides input mostly on the ambulance purchases, but he's also a firefighter as well. And then we also take into account fleet manager Holman's input as well. I'll also go over some quotes that we've gotten and open up the floor to any questions.
Good, because I have a couple. I actually, I actually had time to sit down and look at this, so I'm looking forward to having this conversation with you.
Good, good. I knew that you would.
You know, I, I wanted to know. I wanted to know.
So this vehicle here, this is engine number four. This is the vehicle that is set to be replaced. We purchased this vehicle in 2005. It was built by the Soffin Corporation out of Columbus, Ohio. It, it's able to pump 1,500 gallons of water per minute. It carries its own water supply of 500 gallons. And when this vehicle was purchased, just a little background on this vehicle, we were in a different operational model. So we had actually two different fire, two separate fire companies at Station One on Madison. We had a ladder company and an engine company. So this vehicle was set up primarily to just be a pumper truck, where it carried hose and water, and not as many tools that we needed to carry today. During the pandemic, we wanted, we kind of saw what was coming, that prices were going to increase, that supply chain issues were going to happen, and that delays were going to come into effect. And we decided to put about $30,000 into this vehicle. And what that ended up getting us was some upgraded lighting. We replaced the headlights with LED lights, some warning lights, some cosmetic features such as graphics. But we really wanted to primarily focus on the inside of the cab where the firefighters ride. There's been a lot of research into cancer prevention in the fire service, and one of the largest contributing factors to cancer in the fire service is trapped carcinogens inside the cab of the fire engine. So what we ended up doing was we removed almost all of the soft surfaces inside the cab that we could, that could trap the carcinogens. The seats were one of the biggest ones. So after a fire, the firefighters climb into the vehicle with their dirty gear on, and the upholstered seats just trap the carcinogens. And every time they get up and down out of the seat, it releases them back into the air to where they're breathing it in. So what we ended up doing with those seats in that vehicle, there are, it's almost a vinyl that's impermeable, and when they get dirty, we can unzip it, take it off, put a clean one on, and throw those in the wash.
Oh, that's good. That was one of the questions I had.
Yes, they are, they're, they're a reusable item that we keep, so we have two sets for, like one for each, two for each seat.
Very good. The other question I had before you go on is the updates during COVID, was that in 2020?
It, we...
Because I thought I read something that it added 25 years.
So what we do is we try to keep each fire engine for 25 years. This has been a standard practice. It's an industry-wide practice. The NFPA recommends that you replace every piece of fire apparatus every 25 years.
Okay, thank you.
They recommend that each vehicle spends 15 years in frontline service and 10 years in reserve service. That way, the vehicle is up to the standard of the day that the firefighters are riding in, and as long as these vehicles are serviceable and safe, then it's okay to keep them. But at 25 years, it's almost a end-of-life time limit. So we did this during COVID to extend it. We didn't know where, where the economy was going, we didn't know where society was going. We wanted to make sure that we got this vehicle to the 25 years. So that was the intent behind just doing some upgrades, making it safer for our firefighters. This vehicle would then be disposed of upon delivery of the new vehicle, and that new vehicle would end up at Station Two on our city's west end.
And when you say disposed of, does that mean that it goes to a volunteer firefighter crew somewhere out in the middle of somewhere else?
It could. We have sold a vehicle on, on the used fire apparatus market before. You know, we sold it to a department in Kentucky that, you know, they couldn't afford something brand new. The used fire truck market is booming right now, because when I start talking about the delays, departments need vehicles now. So they, they purchase a used vehicle as almost like a stopgap until that, until that new vehicle shows up. So, when we built the capital plan, we anticipated a lot of delays. We saw it with our previous fire engine purchase. We saw, we see it with our ambulance purchases. Ambulances have a three-year wait time from the day you order them. Fire apparatus are anywhere from two to five-plus years now. So it's very hard for municipalities to plan ahead. You know, we just don't know what's going to happen in the future, so we have to anticipate those things. Currently, our capital budget request for 2028 is set at 1.5 million for this vehicle. When I initially put this number in, I overestimated on purpose, and you'll see when we get to the quotes that I just barely made it. It was, it was sticker shock for me. It was upsetting for me, to say the least.
I did see that compared to the last one that we got for 1.1 million?
Exactly.
And now it's 1.5, and I'm wondering if by 2028, yeah?
Well, so, just, just for reference, when you, when you sign on the dotted line, you sign the contract, that is the price. So that price is 2028's price. Today's price is 2028's price. The longer we wait, the more increases are tacked on. There are some clauses in contracts that state, leave, leave some wiggle room because of tariffs, because of, you know, anything. There's going to be a bump in the road. There may be something that costs a little extra to get next time. So they, they all recommend, leave a little wiggle room, just so you, you don't have to go back and, I don't have to sit here and say, I need more, please, after the immense investment that we're about to make. There is a controversy, I call it a crisis, in the US fire apparatus industry. So in 2008, Wall Street and private equity became involved in the apparatus industry. Rev Group was created, and they purchased eight different independent manufacturers, and those included the likes of E1, KME, Ferrara, Spartan, Smeele, and Ladder Towers. And they consolidated all those companies into the one rev group. And currently, three manufacturers control 80% of the market share. So that, that is one of the items that has really created this dilemma for fire departments and municipalities across the nation. The three companies that control 80% of the market share are Rev Group, Rosenbauer, and Pierce. Prices have since ballooned, and delivery times have created unacceptable delays to fire departments across the nation. So on September 10th this year, the Senate Homeland Security Committee held a hearing with representatives from apparatus manufacturers and American fire service leadership, and anti-monopoly and antitrust discussion, and Federal Trade Commission inquiries are underway. I watched this hearing in its entirety, and it made me not want to have this meeting, because it, knowing that there's fire departments out there waiting five-plus years for a vehicle that they need yesterday, it's, it's pretty troubling. So, I mean, there's some root causes to these ballooning prices and delays. The ARPA funding was a big one. We didn't utilize ARPA funding for our, our fire apparatus purchases, but many cities did. I know Cleveland was one. So all of these orders came in at once, and they can only build so many trucks at a time. And when the orders just keep coming and keep coming and keep coming, the queue gets longer and longer. Supply chain was a big one, and a shrinking workforce is also one of those. All right, so the apparatus committee process, first we sit down and we talk about our mission needs. We gather input from the crew that will be getting the vehicle. So everyone at Fire Station Number Two was asked to come up with a wants and needs list, get it to their officer, and then submit it to the committee. Committee sits down with me, and they say, chief, here's, here's what they want, here's what they need. And we kind of go through this list, and we determine, okay, here's, here's what I need this vehicle to do. I need it to be, I need it to pump water, I need it to carry different lengths of hose, different sizes of hose. I need it to carry, because this is our rescue engine company, I need it to carry extra equipment, so it needs to carry the jaws of life, open water rescue equipment, swift water rescue equipment, ice rescue equipment, high angle, low angle rescue equipment, confined space equipment. And I also want to take into account the safety of the firefighters and their health, so we need to prevent them from getting cancer as best we can while they're riding inside of the vehicle. I want them to be safe when they're traveling. If there's an accident, I want them to be able to walk away and come back to work the next shift. And one of our biggest, biggest hazards, biggest risks, something that keeps me up at night, is them responding to I-90. So I'll show you in some of the designs that we received, some ways that we can improve their visibility and alert drivers while they're on I-90. We also took into account some community initiatives with the Climate Action Plan. We requested an idle reduction system on this vehicle. That ranges in price from 15 to $30,000 depending on the manufacturer. So I did look into an electric fire truck for Councilman Bullock. The electric fire engine is built by Pierce Manufacturing, and Rosenbauer makes one as well. The price is double, plus the infrastructure. They have to install infrastructure to charge the vehicle, and that is if our grid can handle it. So while the technology is there, I don't feel that Lakewood should be in on the ground level with that. I think we should stick with what we know, what works, and what is going to be reliable for our citizens. So once we gathered the input, determined our mission needs, we contacted manufacturers.
Before you go there, can I ask you just a question about the increased visibility on 90? And that's because of distracted drivers or whatever that are plowing people over?
It is such a hazardous environment for our firefighters. More firefighters are killed, or first responders, police involved. More of them are killed on, in freeway accidents, just working at a scene than anywhere else. So protecting them, increasing our visibility while we're there, is immensely important to me. It's, I guess it would be a distracted driver, people driving too, too fast past an accident scene. We've had two, we had a state trooper and a Cleveland police officer killed in Lakewood on I-90, and we, we cover such a small section of that. So I, if I can avoid that from here on out, I would retire a happy man.
And by having this truck, is that just because of the size of it that's going to increase the visibility over another truck, or?
So we, in our design, we requested that a light bar be placed across the top of the vehicle in the back. And I'll show in the designs. It can be used for like a scene light, where it's just pure light coming out to light up the dark, or it can be used as like a traffic arrow.
Got it.
With, with like yellow amber lights, warning drivers. They can see it, very bright, big red truck. Hopefully, you can't miss it.
Hopefully.
Yep.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So the manufacturers we contacted were Pierce because of the electric option. We contacted Soffin, and we also contacted Seagrave. We do have, I'll get to each one, but I'll explain why each one was contacted when I get to their slides. They come up with the design, we, we go, we give them, here's our list. They come up with the design, they send it to us, they give us a drawing, we're like, yeah, take this off, we don't like this, add this. It's a back-and-forth process that takes months. We're consistently reviewing these and then going over, seeing, "Okay, well, we need to fit this piece of equipment in this compartment. This compartment is not big enough. What can you do for us?" And they send it to their engineers, and they send it back to us for review. So one of the first quotes we got was from Pierce Manufacturing. They've been in the business for quite a while. They're a subsidiary of Oshkosh, and they're located in Wisconsin. They have a local service center in Macedonia. We currently have one Pierce fire engine. We purchased that vehicle during the pandemic to replace an aging-out heavy rescue vehicle. We purchased it used from a department in Texas. No road salt in Texas. So the underside, the meat and potatoes of this vehicle were sound. We purchased that vehicle for $285,000, and we received a trade-in of $35,000 on the former heavy rescue. This vehicle is due for refurbishment so we can extend that usable life so it can continue to serve us in Lakewood.
And what year is that truck?
That is a 2010. So by, I refer, there's two levels of refurbishment. There's a Level 1 and a Level 2. The level that we are going to go to with this vehicle would essentially reset the clock.
Oh, okay.
So here is our design from Pierce. So as you can see, along the top of the back of the truck up here, you can see these little, these dots along the top.
Yeah.
So that is the, that is the light. It can, it'll either be a floodlight or an arrow. So we can turn that on and warn drivers that are coming towards us. Or if we're on a side street and it's in the middle of the night, we can just turn the floodlight on, and we've lit up the whole scene. When we sent out our requests to the manufacturers, we asked, we wanted to compare apples to apples, or, you know, Macintosh to Pink Ladies. So we asked for the same-sized motor, the same transmission, the same-sized pump, the same-sized water tank, the same amount of seats in the cab for the firefighters, the same ground ladders, the same amount of hose that we're to carry. So we wanted everything to be as similar as possible so we could gauge an accurate, just get us an accurate number and really do the apples-to-apples comparison. One thing that we requested of all of our manufacturers was to have a stainless steel body. We've noticed that over the years, the bodies on the fire engines start to corrode, the paint peels. Then we have problems with the undercarriage, the frame. So we wanted to protect the vehicles so we could get the maximum life out of them. We understand that this is an enormous investment for our citizens, and we want this truck to be able to be around for the 25 years so we get our money's worth out of it. This vehicle, the price that we received from Pierce was $1,437,620. Unfortunately, the build time is a 48-to-51-month build time, which does not work on our timeline. Included in this price would be two trips to Wisconsin for the apparatus committee to do a pre-construction meeting and acceptance inspection at the end. So we would only be able to go up, we would only be able to go up there in the beginning, when they, before they start building it, and when it's finally all done. Our next manufacturer was Sutton. They've been around since 1890. They are a family-owned company. They have five generations of Suttons working in the plant and the company. It's located in Columbus, Ohio. They have local service available. They have a mobile technician that shows up at our fire stations. We give them a call. We say, "Hey, this isn't working," or "Something is broken." They're, they come to us. We don't have to send the truck anywhere. And unless it's a major component, it can be fixed here in Lakewood, and it's back on the road in a short amount of time. If it's a major component issue, they can drive it down to Columbus and fix it in the factory. We currently have two Sutton apparatus. Engine number four is one of them. And then the second is engine number three, which was delivered in 2024. We ordered that in 2022. It's at station number three on Clifton Boulevard. And it is a quint apparatus, which means it pumps water, carries water, carries hose, carries ground ladders, and is equipped with an aerial ladder. And like you mentioned, it was purchased for 1.1 million. Here's the design we received from Sutton. See if I can show, up at the top, this grid up here is that light that we talked about. We also added some compartment space. We want, we want to take all the tools out of the cab, all of the, all of our brake stuff tools. If they were ever involved in an accident, I don't want flying projectiles going through the cab at my firefighters. It'll also help keep the cab cleaner. So they would just step out of the vehicle, open up one of those compartments, and their tools would be right inside, right outside their door. We also wanted to consider the fact that we are an all-hazards department. The fire service is ever-changing. Tomorrow, we could be required to handle some other type of emergency or hazard that comes down the road and mitigate those risks. So when we designed this vehicle, we wanted to leave, we wanted to be able to store everything that the current vehicle already does and leave about 20% room for growth. This is a 25-year vehicle. We want it to be able to serve us well into the future. Price for this vehicle was $1,460,860. Build time is 28 to 30 months. There are unlimited trips to the factory for pre-construction, acceptance testing, and mid-build inspections. We just have to phone ahead, and that would be it. So the idle reduction system is $32,300 on this. Essentially, what they do is they insert two lithium-ion batteries. So if the vehicle is sitting on a side street and it's not operating, as in like it's not pumping water, the vehicle will turn the motor off and run off the battery so there's no emissions. And once, once the battery level got to a certain point, the engine would kick back on to recharge the batteries.
And is that cost included in that 1.46?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Our last manufacturer that we reached out to was Seagrave. Seagrave has been around even longer, 1881. They're family-owned. They're also in Wisconsin, but their service center is located in Kentucky. They don't have a huge presence here in Northeast Ohio. They are the premier builder of fire trucks for New York City. If New York City swears by them, I'm going to take their word for it. They've built so many vehicles for them. I, they've been using them for over 30 years. We have never owned a Seagrave fire apparatus, and Cleveland Heights is the only one in Northeast Ohio that we know of. They do have an excellent reputation for building durable and high-quality fire engines. We made contact with them numerous times. I don't know if we're just small potatoes to them, but it took them until this morning to get me a quote. And we started reaching out at the end of April. So we gave them the exact same specifications, the same requirements. And that quote came in at 1.35 to 1.45 million. So it's right in, right in where everyone else is falling in line. They have a 50-month build time. So again, not great, doesn't meet our timeline. And I'm still, so the process that we've already done with the other two manufacturers of the back-and-forth, the tweaking of the design still has to happen. I was, I was a little bit disappointed that they couldn't come through for us in a more timely fashion, knowing the great reputation that they have. So that is essentially the process and how we are, you know, trying to make this decision. I guess at this point, any questions, any concerns?
Colleagues?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Chief, for the thorough presentation. You know, obviously, council is going to do what we need to do to support the men and women in the fire service. From a process standpoint, and this might be a Director Mahoney question, but, you know, you lay it out, 2028 is the capital plan year. I do remember with, I think the one we got in 2024, it required like a sizable down payment. So I like, what does council approval look like in this sense? Is it like, we approve a capital plan, and we, these are estimates you're giving us, you're trying to stay in front of it so that, you know, when we see it in the budget, it's not a surprise? Is that kind of the intention here?
Yes, it is. Previous, with the previous vehicle, that vehicle came out of turn. We were in a situation where the truck that it replaced was failing. It needed a lot of work. It was out of service for a year. That's another issue that we have, is getting parts for older vehicles. And the downtime is really what grinds us to a halt. We need to be ready 24/7. When, when I have a vehicle that goes out of service, I need something to take its place instantly. I need no interruptions in our service to the community. So keeping on top of our capital purchases helps us with that. And when we have to drag things out and source parts, getting service, getting reliable service and quick service from these manufacturers is probably our top priority. We have a couple of vehicles now that we need parts. We can't get anybody on the phone. We need to use a portal. We need to do this. And then the parts show up, and it's not the right part. And it's weeks and weeks and weeks that this vehicle is sitting idle, that we can't use it. So essentially, that, the vehicle we purchased previously needed council approval to earmark that money outside of the capital budget at that time just so we could place the order, get it going. I don't believe that this, because it's not out of turn, because it's already in the capital plan, I don't believe that there's going to be much that's going to be needed for that. I just wanted to be here to present this so everyone is aware that, hey, this is coming. This is, this is how we do it. Once the order is placed, the payment, so it was a little different. For Pierce and Sutton, payment is due on delivery. There are pre-payment discounts. If we, as a city, decide, "Let's pay for it upfront," we can save 5%. Seagrave, a little bit different. They want five installments. They want 25% to get started, 25% once the chassis is built, 25%, 20%, and then 5% when it shows up in Lakewood. So that, that's an option as well. I just, Director Mahoney would have to be the one to make that call. So I leave the, I leave the numbers up to her as far as, I mean, I'm just here to tell you what fire truck we want. So, yeah.
Thank you, and I think what we can all agree on is that private equity ruins everything. And it's interesting that they realize the market that they can get 80% of the share of, and then just chop it for pieces, and then, because I, you know, part of that is they're smart enough to know that if they make it hard for you to get parts, then it makes you want to get a new truck.
Yeah, planned obsolescence.
Yes. So that's interesting. But I, you know, I, thank you for the thorough presentation. I think you kind of went through the current truck, and, you know, it's been refurbished a little. But, you know, it's all about having a plan and not letting the plan work you. And so I appreciate your kind of thoughtfulness in bringing it in front of us early so that there's no surprises. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilman, Councilwoman Merks?
Thank you. This isn't a question. It's a comment. Thanks for the thorough explanation. I mean, I, I'm all in favor of you having the equipment that you need to do your job because you guys work hard and really take care of us in the city. So thank you for explaining this. And I can't imagine stainless steel undercarriage. It's got to add to the expense, but I'm sure in the long run, it cuts down on a lot of the maintenance. But thank you for the thorough explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate all your work on this and keeping us up to date and answering all my questions.
Thank you.
Without any further questions from the committee, I will make a motion to receive and file this presentation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. And without further comment or business, this meeting is adjourned.
We'll take just a couple minutes to reset, and before we start full council.
All right. My eyes stopped.
All right, we will call the October 20th meeting of council to order. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bullock, absent. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
President Kepel.
Here.
Councilmember Marks. Councilmember Hamilton Steiner.
Here.
Councilmember Strebig.
Here.
Move to excuse the absence of Councilmember Bullock.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held October 6, 2025.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Without objection, I'd like to move item 11 to the top.
Item 11, Beautiful Home Awards presented by Keep Lakewood Beautiful.
I believe we have a presentation from Keep Lakewood Beautiful. Welcome, coming up Agnes. And the mic's already on, so you don't have to push anything.
All right, wonderful, I don't have to yell, hey? Hello, everybody, thank you for having us. I'm Agnes Michalak with current Chair of Keep Lakewood Beautiful. For anyone that's not acquainted with us, we are the proud hosts of all of our local adopt-a-spots, monthly pop-up pickups, all initiatives supporting the environmental improvement of our great city and more. However, today, our focus is on our Beautiful Home Awards. Our Home Awards would not be possible without the hard work and attention of my fellow board member Hannah Gao. On behalf of myself and our board, we thank you Hannah for dedicating your time to this event and making it look so easy. So please, everyone, welcome Hannah to present this year's Beautiful Home Awards.
Thank you. Really, it's a whole board effort, so I can't take all the credit by any means, although I'm a little bit of the face of it, I suppose. Well, thank you to City Council, thank you Mayor George, the administration for welcoming Keep Lakewood Beautiful once again, allowing us to celebrate with you for our annual Beautiful Home Awards. So the Beautiful Home Awards has been sponsored by Keep Lakewood Beautiful for over 10 years now. And to quickly tell you a little bit about the process, the community is invited to nominate a home and the Keep Lakewood Beautiful Board comprises a panel to select winners representing each school district. The panel considers each home based on criteria like eye-popping landscape, well-maintained features. This year, 83 nominations were received for 71 total properties. And from that pool of stellar representation of our city's beautiful homes, we are pleased to present and celebrate the following seven. And to the awardees in the audience, to let you know what to expect, so I'll give a short description of you and your homes and then ask that you please step up to be recognized, take a quick photo with Mayor George if you would indulge us, and receive a presentation of a plaque to keep at or on your home, which I think one of my board members is going to assist with, wonderful. Okay, so to start, first up, 1452 Robinwood Avenue. Robert and Karen Porter have lived at this home for 36 years, their first and only home. Built in the 1890s, records are varying on the exact year, this stately Queen Anne Revival might be the oldest, oldest home of this bunch. Their enthusiasm for gardening is infectious and started with a trend of vegetable and front yard gardening on their streets. Rob's love of gardening was influenced by his parents, his father in particular, who always kept a garden. Their words of advice include keeping it simple so you don't get overwhelmed, lean on containers for added color and texture, and don't be shy to mix veggies and flowers. Space is not an excuse. Please join us in congratulating Rob and Karen. Yeah, we can maybe just head to the side, take a quick photo, Mindy will be our photographer, again, it's a total village of helpers here, so thank you, everyone. And while they take their photos, I'll move on to the, the next. This is actually the, the, the other contender for possible oldest home of this bunch is Sherry Hart's home at 1333 Lakeland Avenue. It was the eighth home built on the street back in 1897. Sherry's inspiration stems from so many other homes really across Lakewood that she would see and admire while walking her dog. After investing in an exterior facelift of her home last year, she knew it was time to finally create the garden of her dreams, full of wildflowers and pollinators. She loves nothing more than enjoying the monarchs and bees from her front porch since we're so thrilled to honor Sherry today. Sherry, would you like to step up? All right. So next, talk about Thought Two and Mu Kanau. They moved into their Cape Cod-style century home at 2195 Waterbury Road four years ago, in 2021. They first started to experiment with planting while at a refugee camp in Thailand. Upon their arrival to the US and Lakewood, their expertise continued to evolve with container gardening in their first apartment to full landscaping at their next first home in Lakewood. They encourage others to not be afraid to simply start small like they did and they continue to grow and add to their, their beautiful front and backyards each spring. So please join us in congratulating Thought and Mu. All right, so next. 2164 Concord Drive is a duplex filled with three generations of the Walters and Castellon family. Built in 1923, the home is a unique stucco-finished colonial and the gardens in their expansive corner lot are a labor of love that take all four adults plus the kids from time to time to keep up with. Practice and patience are their key words of advice, in addition to finding thrifty half-off plants when they can and sharing pollinators with neighbors too. And they share that the rewards of connecting with nature and wildlife is well worth the effort. So congratulations to Samantha, Mario, Jenny, and Mark and family, I believe. All right. Thomas Mulready and Carol Hunts have lived in their 1913-built arts and crafts home at 1365 Webb Road for 37 years. And it boasts beautiful ornamental details throughout the whole exterior, especially the porch and eaves have really beautiful woodwork. Carol inherited her love of gardening from her father and enjoys the trial and error of trying new designs and techniques. Their words of wisdom are to trust your instinct and start small. Common, common words of wisdom here, things can always be moved or removed if it's not working. Congratulations to Thomas and Carol. All right, so I, next awardee unfortunately couldn't make it with us today, so I'll just grab the plaque, I think. But Kristin Larson has lived at 15905 Lake Avenue for three and a half years. And while she inherited a lovely backyard garden, the front was very overwhelming at first to keep up with. But in starting over, she was able to simplify and create the beautiful oasis you see today, in addition to keeping those distinctive lion statuary at the front. She recommends that others start small as well. Landscaping is a lot of work and can quickly become a burden, so start small and keep it simple. So again, Kristin couldn't be here tonight, but many congratulations to her. I'll grab that in a moment. So next up, Andy Erker and Mary Hildenbrand moved into their home at 2076 Lincoln Avenue in 2020 after completing a renovation. They recommend experimenting and learning through trial and error. And it doesn't hurt if one in the partnership, Mary in this case, has a knack for design and creating beautiful cozy spaces you can't help but want to linger in. Their words of advice to others, and it's a great way to close this out, I think, is to use your front porch. This is Lakewood after all. So congratulations to Andy and Mary. And don't go too far because we'll take a group photo after this too, so you can just hang. All right, so congratulations to everyone, this year's Beautiful Home Award winners. Thank you again to Council, Mayor George, for allowing us the time and space to celebrate with these amazing community members, who show so much pride and care of the place here in our community. So want to ask everyone to just quickly come up for one last group shot, if you don't mind, as a group. Oh, here, yeah.
If you want to come up into this section right here, then we can get the Lakewood behind us and Mayor George can come up in the middle there with the whole group, so. And members of Lakewood Alive, Keep Lakewood Beautiful, please join them also so we can celebrate all of you. Scoot up, everybody. All right, there's a lot I can, we're going to have to do like a, okay, everybody ready? One, two, th- three. Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, so congratulations and thank you so much to Keep Lakewood Beautiful for all of your hard work in putting this on and thank you to all the residents. It is perfectly acceptable for you to leave, it is not considered rude at all. So please go about your evening if you wish, so thank you all for being here. All right, I will move to receive and file the presentation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item one, report from Committee of the Whole held October 13, 2025.
Dear colleagues, the Committee of the Whole met on October 13th to interview candidates to fill the council-appointed seats on the newly-formed Complete Streets and Advisory Board case. We received applications from 23 residents interested in joining the case board. After reviewing all of the excellent applications from 23 residents interested in joining the board, after, oh, I'll just repeat myself, after reviewing all of the excellent applications at a previous Committee of the Whole meeting, council invited 10 people to interview. Each interview was scheduled for 10 minutes and we asked each candidate to come prepared to answer the following questions. Why are you interested in serving on case and what skills, knowledge, and experiences would you contribute? What do you know about Complete Streets and why is it important? What is one near short-term goal on which case could begin working right away? Council was blown away by the unique skill sets and the amount of passion for Complete Streets that each candidate brought to the table. After the interviews were over, we entered into executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment of a public official. Upon exiting executive session, I made a motion to insert the following names into Resolution 202542. Sean McDermott, Tracy Greenberg, Cody George, and Emily Lindberg. And to enter Vice President Baker's name to serve as the ex officio council representative to the case board. A motion was made and passed unanimously to refer Resolution 202542 as amended back to full council for adoption. And it is on the docket this evening. We would like to thank everyone that took the time to apply for the case advisory board, as well as those that came in for an interview. Lakewood is truly blessed to have so many highly qualified residents that are willing to volunteer their time and talents in the service of our community. It was a very difficult decision to narrow it down to just four people, but we are confident that our appointees are up for the challenge of getting the case advisory board up and running. We expect that there will be many opportunities for the community to continue to be involved in this work moving forward. Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item two, substitute Resolution 202542, a resolution to take effect immediately, appointing four volunteer members to the Complete and Active Streets Education and Advisory Board and one ex officio, non-voting member of council to serve as liaison.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Do we have anyone that wanted to speak on this issue? You don't have to, just seeing that there might be, okay. Nope, okay. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item three, report from Public Works and Sustainability Committee meeting held October 13, 2025.
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, President Kepel. Yes, on October 13th, we held a meeting of the Public Works and Sustainability Committee to talk over a couple different issues, the first being some submerged land leases. This is for folks living along the lake shore who are looking to do some shore enhancements and stabilization projects. This is pretty standard, as described by the Law Department. Three of those were referred favorably back to council and two were deferred at the request of the homeowners. The second item was to discuss Resolution 2025-48 from Councilman Bullock, speaking about enhancing public input for active transportation plan and infrastructure projects. I think we had a very good, robust conversation about this. In the end, we felt the resolution as currently written wasn't quite ready to be passed by this body. So at the request of Councilman Bullock himself, we deferred so that he and I believe Councilwoman, uh, Hamilton Steiner will continue to work on that resolution to get it to a point where we can take a vote on it. I'll make a motion to receive and file this communication.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item four, Resolution 202557, a resolution to take effect immediately, approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1040 Erie Cliff Drive, Lakewood, Ohio, in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item five, Resolution 202558, a resolution to take effect immediately, approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1041 Forest Cliff Drive, Lakewood, Ohio, in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item six, Resolution 202559, a resolution to take effect immediately, approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1039 Forest Cliff Drive, Lakewood, Ohio, in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item seven, report from Public Safety Committee meeting held today, October 20, 2025.
Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee met tonight to discuss two topics, one being the TNR ordinance that we've been working on with the SWAB and CLAWS and the Law Department and Mr. Crumley, the Animal Control Officer. And we're still having some conversations about just a last few couple things that we need to just clean up a little bit with training and registration. And we do have some new language from the attorney that CLAWS has been working with on unsanitary conditions that we'd like to add to, to the ordinance so that we don't get into situations where people are hoarding animals and things of that nature. There's just a little bit of cleanup to do on a couple other points, including making owners responsible if the animal safety officer has to, to save the life of the pet, has to have veterinary services performed. So just, just a couple other things that we're getting real close. And I will meet again with the SWAB at their next meeting and we'll, we'll hammer out a couple, a couple more of these points here. And then our second order of business was a communication from Fire Chiefs Fairbanks regarding the fire engine purchase that is going to be happening in 2028. And he gave us all the information about the different types of engines that they have currently, what year they need to be replaced, the conditions that they're in, and recommendations that he's looking at for new fire trucks. types of engines that they have currently, what year they need to be replaced, the conditions that they're in, and recommendations that he's looking at for new fire trucks.
Alright, I'll move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item eight, substitute ordinance 20-2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately updating various sections of Chapter 505, Animals and Foul of the Lakewood Codified Ordinances, and creating regulations for trap, neuter spay, and return of community cats within the city of Lakewood.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item nine, report from Rules and Ordinances Committee meeting held today, October 20, 2025.
Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner.
Thank you, President Kepel. Council colleagues, members of the administration, and Mayor George, the Rules and Ordinances Committee met earlier this evening. The meeting minutes from the May 15, 2023 meeting was approved. The committee then entered into executive session for the purpose of considering details relative to the security arrangements and emergency response protocols for a public body or a public office. Michael Colada, Chief Information Officer, joined the executive session and shared the city of Lakewood's cybersecurity policy program as required by state law. After discussion, the executive session ended and a motion was made to favorably refer Resolution 2025-53 to full council for approval.
Thank you.
I'll move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 10, Resolution 202553, a resolution to take effect immediately adopting the city of Lakewood's cybersecurity policy.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Vice President Baker?
Yeah, I'd like to note that, and I think that Assistant Director Swallow told us to do so, that there was some slight updates to this policy that added some language related to council office and council offices' reporting requirements. So I'd just like to reflect that that version is the October 20 version of that new policy.
Thank you. And I'll just note also appreciation to the IT Department for putting this together. Very important these days. We're seeing a lot of municipalities come under attack, so good to have the policy in place.
Any further discussion on the motion to adopt? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 12, communication from President Kepel regarding City Hall update.
Dear colleagues, I am writing to provide a timeline and update on the due diligence work being performed regarding City Hall space potential solutions. As you know, the heads of all three branches of government, myself, Mayor George, and Judge Neff, have all recognized the need to address the space issues at the current City Hall, and council has previously identified addressing the police space issues, particularly the insufficient women's locker rooms, as a budget priority. In 20, as a budget priority. In 2023, the administration had Weber Murphy Fox complete a space analysis study at City Hall. And at the final meeting of council in 2024, Mayor George and I introduced a communication to bring the space study before council. At the February 3 and June 16 meetings of Committee of the Whole, council members asked a variety of questions, which could be generally summarized as, what are the possible options to solve the space issues? How much does each option cost? What are the operational and customer service pros-cons of each? At the July 7 meeting of council, the administration placed legislation on the docket to purchase 1470 Warren Road and express the idea of moving administrative functions to that property, allowing for the expansion of the police and courts into the existing City Hall to create a justice center. In order to properly consider this proposal, council leadership hired project management consultants, PMC, to help us evaluate any data that the administration had previously collected toward answering the above questions, as well as evaluate what additional data we needed to ask the administration to provide to answers to additional questions such as, how could an addition be built onto the current City Hall of sufficient size to address the space issues? And how much would it cost? How much will it cost to fully gut and renovate the Warren Road building and retrofit the current City Hall into a justice center? How do the City Hall improvements previously laid out in the five-year capital plan, for example, window replacements, fit into the overall budget and timing of the proposed project options? What are the ongoing operational costs and the customer service and efficiency pros-cons of each? Vice President Baker, Councilmember Evans, and I have formed a working group to dig into these overarching questions, and we have been meeting weekly with our consultant from PMC, Chris Panici, an architect with a background in civic construction and renovation projects. We asked Planning Director Byington to pull all preliminary documents related to the City Hall space question into a shared drive, which is now accessible to all council members, and PMC reviewed them. Below is a timeline of the sum of the continuing work following that preliminary review. And I'm going to skip ahead here to October 14, where we, David Tholof, Weber Murphy Fox, and Chris Panici of PMC, met and created the following summarization of options that have evolved through this due diligence process. Option one, renovate the current City Hall with modest 3,000 square foot addition to the west for police expansion and renovate the annex across the street. Option two, infill the U in the back of the current City Hall as an addition and renovate the current City Hall in annex, though the administration has stated that the Sally Port location for the jail makes this option less viable. Option three, renovate current City Hall and add a large addition. The estimate created is based on a two-story addition onto the front of the building. Option four, purchase and fully renovate 1470 Warren Road to accommodate a large part of the administrative functions, renovate the current City Hall to expand police and courts, and sell the annex. Once Weber Murphy Fox has completed this estimate, the council working group and PMC will reconvene. It is my hope that we will then be able to move forward with the Committee of the Whole meeting with the two consultants in attendance to review and discuss all of the data for the options, including project costs. I'll move to refer this communication to Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I'll also add, I just received an email today that we have some movement from Weber Murphy Fox on this, so we hope that will be happening sooner rather than later. Any further discussion? Hearing none. On the motion to refer to Committee of the Whole, Committee of the Whole, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item 13, communication from Councilmember Strebig regarding update to the bylaws of the Lakewood Youth Council.
Councilmember Strebig.
Dear colleagues, I submitted the following resolution to you on behalf of the Lakewood Youth Council to update the youth council's bylaws. The youth council was established in 2019 and drafted its original bylaws shortly after that time. The bylaws were first updated in 2023. After working under the updated bylaws for over two years, the council saw a need to incorporate more flexibility, better reflect the existing practices of the council, and to address preliminary, excuse me, parliamentary procedure, parliamentary questions and issues that have arisen. The changes are relatively minor and do not substantially alter the operation of the youth council. The process for updating youth council bylaws is for youth council to approve them by a majority vote, which occurred this summer. The next step is for the bylaws to be approved by City Council, which the accompanying resolution seeks to accomplish. I will also end by saying that as an advisor to this group of bright young adults, I applaud them for taking time to ensure that their processes and practices are accurately reflected in this bylaws. I look forward to future discussions on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? The next piece is the actual legislation. I'm thinking of referring it to rules and ordinances. So Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner, you're getting a record number of things and for rules and ordinances.
That's what I hear.
Alright, assuming that that motion were to pass. Alright, on the motion to receive and file the communication, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item 14, Resolution 202560, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the amended bylaws of the Lakewood Youth Council.
Move to refer to rules and ordinances.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? And that would be a good opportunity to invite the youth council in as well, so they can experience a committee meeting as well. You probably already thought of that.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Alright, on the motion to refer to rules and ordinances, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item 15, communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding the Bunce Road Rehabilitation and Lead Service Line Replacement Amendment.
Director Gordon.
Dear President Kepel, members of City Council, filing this communication is a resolution amend Resolution 2025-52, adopted October 6, 2025, to correct a typographical error. The resolution as adopted supported a loan application for the 2026 lead line replacement project. It should have been for the Bunce Road lead line replacement project. As Lakewood will be seeking additional loan funds for a lead line project in 2026, it is necessary to amend this resolution for clarity with these applications moving forward. I request the City Council approve and pass the attached legislation on first reading so that the project may proceed and be prepared for EPA funding. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item 16, Resolution 202552A, a resolution to take effect immediately amending Resolution 202552, adopted October 6, 2025, to correct a typographical error.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes.
Item 17, Fika Cafe LLC, 16203 Hilliard Road.
Council President.
Director Varka.
Respectfully request an extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we will move to defer. Oh, did I?
Yeah, so it's not in our PDF, but it's in Granicus, the Finance Department report, but there's no attachments.
It's not supposed to be in the docket. It was an error.
Okay.
And that version wasn't updated in Granicus.
Okay.
Okay.
So the motion is...
Is still good. We have something in our version of the docket up here that is not on the actual docket, but it's not supposed to be there. So, little confusion up here. But, so we're on the same item, the motion to defer the liquor permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that motion passes. Okay, in rather record time, we're at general public comment. We do have two public comment e-commerce. It'll be entered into the record. And then we have some folks signed in to speak here. So first is Matt Bixenstein. And as usual, you know the drill, but we can come up, actually the light's on, so you don't have to push anything, address the chair, that's me, and avoid personalities. Take it away, Matt. Oh, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Matthew Bixenstein, 2069 Clarence Avenue. Good evening, everyone. I'm here representing Friends of Madison Park, a volunteer group of neighbors striving to ensure Madison Park remains an exceptional asset for our community. The new Burrtown connector entrance and pathway that officially opened last month has been immediately impactful for Madison Park and the surrounding community, creating direct access to the park from the Burrtown neighborhood and Harrison Elementary School. I personally witnessed dozens of park visitors using this new amenity daily to access the park, walk to school, exercise, ride a bike, drink a coffee obtained from any number of Madison Avenue establishments, stroller a baby, and walk a dog. I'm pretty sure my son, in typical seven-year-old fashion, christened the fresh pavement with a scraped knee mere hours after it dried. This is a prime example of the "if you build it, they will come" mantra playing out in the public realm and producing a strong return on a community investment. Thank you to the city of Lakewood, Mayor George, Senior Planner Nocto, City Council members, Cog County Planning Commission, and everyone who made Phase One of the Madison Park Master Plan a success. I'm here before you today during budget season to encourage the folks in this room to build on this wave of goodwill and positive momentum by ensuring the Madison Park Master Plan continues to be prioritized as we look to 2026 and beyond. Specifically, the Master Plan calls for major renovation projects pertaining to three of Madison Park's most well-used and aging amenities, Beck's Pool, the playground, and the Futsal Court. Each of these is deserving of a major investment that is thoughtful, comprehensive, incorporates public input, and seeks to maximize the finite space each occupies in our 17-acre city park. While we at Friends of Madison Park realize it's unrealistic to expect each of these projects to occur simultaneously, it's our hope that each takes place in the next several years. We are encouraged by tomorrow's public meeting regarding the Futsal Court and the possibility of obtaining grant money to help fund this project. Perhaps more than any other amenity, the Futsal Court embodies the spirit of our park as a uniquely Madison Park feature that took shape thanks to city leadership recognizing the opportunity to convert underutilized tennis courts into this ultra-popular heart and soul of our park nearly a decade ago. Madison Park is beloved by so many in our community. It's our city's second-largest park and one of the most visited public spaces in all of Lakewood. It's been the anchor of our city's southeast quadrant for more than a century. Let's ensure progress continues at Madison Park as we plan for 2026 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor George.
Thank you. And thank you for the, thanks, Matt, for that. As we enter budget season, just to let all know that we will be proposing, moving forward with Madison Pool for next year. We'll be proposing design and engineering next year, followed by pool construction. We're hoping to do it similar timeframe as Foster Pool, which is getting it done over the winter, although that was a miracle that happened. But we're going to try to pull off two miracles. And then proposing that the playground happened after that. As we spoke within Public Works and Engineering, we determined it would be best to make sure that we get the design and engineering first, so that in case we have to expand the footprint event, we're not tearing up the new playground. So that's kind of the plan. So just want to let you know that.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just piggyback on that, that as you may have seen, that council recently put out a communication of some of our budget priorities after we had had a recent retreat for that purpose. And the, moving forward with Madison Park Master Plan work was one of the top three priorities for council members, and it continues to be something that council members have mentioned as a priority. So I think that's a shared commitment from council and administration on continuing that work on Madison Park. So, and thank you, Matt, for all of your work and for Friends of Madison Park, for all that they do to make that park excellent. Other comment, Councilwoman Marks?
Thank you. Matt, I just want to thank you for coming forward tonight with your requests. And just know that we on council support that idea to continue with developing Madison Park. But I importantly want to thank you very much for your leadership in making Madison Park a great place and a safe place for kids to be. It wouldn't be what it is without you, Matt. So it's, you're very much needed here in Lakewood. Thank you for all the work you do and the commitment you have to the city as an incredible neighbor and volunteer. I appreciate you so very much. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Other council members, any comments on that? Alright, thank you. Next up, we have Genesis Brown.
Hello, Madam President, members of council, Madam Clerk, Mayor George, members of administration and staff. Good evening. My name is Genesis Brown. I am here with my wife, who's the Chief Operations Officer for Cog County Board of Developmental Disabilities. Last year, one of our directors attended a city council meeting to share some updates with you about Cog County DD and give you an overview of the work that we do. This year, I'd like to share by recognizing an important milestone for Cog County DD, the 20th anniversary of our last levy. Two-thirds of Cog County DD's $150 million budget comes from a 3.9 mil continuous levy that was last passed in Cog County voters in 2005. From birth through adulthood, we support people with developmental disabilities to live here their best lives. Our mission is to support and empower people with developmental disabilities to live, learn, work, and play in the community. Last year, we served 351 people with developmental disabilities in Lakewood, and we serve approximately 15,000 people across the county. This is a 20% increase in people being served compared to 2005. Over the last 20 years, the levy approved by county, Cog County voters has supported people with developmental disabilities through early intervention services, therapies like occupational and physical therapy, and speech-language pathology, consultative services to support students in schools, transitional services for young adults, housing and employment supports, assertive technology services. Levy funding also allows Cog County DD to make strategic investments in the community. Since 2021, we have granted nearly $1 million to support over 50 community libraries, arts and culture, and recreational leisure organizations in making their programs and physical spaces accessible to people of all abilities. We awarded $180,000... We awarded one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in community grants in two thousand and twenty-five. In addition to our work supporting people with disabilities in Cog County, we strive to be a resource for communities. We welcome the opportunity to talk more about how we can best support the residents of Lakewood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all your important work and letting us know about it. Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right, and then finally, Amy Herberger.
Good evening, council members, Mayor George, and fellow residents. I stand here tonight not in opposition to progress, but in defense of public safety, transparent governance, and fiscal responsibility. It's deeply disturbing that this city has already spent one point seven million on a plan that was supposed to only total twenty-two million, and yet we're being told there's no turning back. How did we get this far without proper public input or a clearly vetted alternative? The public engagement was performative. Residents received one vague notice with no mention of a ten-foot-wide multimodal path. That is not transparency, it's misdirection. And it's not just bad communication, it's dangerous planning. This plan includes a hundred and sixteen intersections in just one point five miles on an emergency vehicle route. If you believe that this won't result in serious accidents, then I urge you to walk that corridor during rush hour. ODOT guidelines were clearly not followed, and your staff, while hardworking, appears overstretched, undersupervised. Rushing through a plan of this magnitude without adequate time for review exposes the city to liability and more importantly, it endangers lives. More than fourteen hundred residents have formally objected. That is not a fringe group, and that's a majority, and yet forum letters were prioritized over real residents' voices in your documentation to ODOT. This is a serious misrepresentation of community input. Let me be clear, Bunce Road is just not, just not a route, it's a community. It's where children walk to school, where seniors cross the street, and where families live. This plan will increase traffic hazards, eliminate mature trees, destroy green space, worsen air quality, and reduce livability. This is an environmental and safety nightmare and the process. A rushed timeline, closed-door decision, and no meaningful public alternatives. The plan was voted on before the comment period had ended. That's not how public service works. That's how public trust is destroyed. You're not being good stewards of public money. You do not have federal funding secured, and yet you're spending as it's, as if it's guaranteed. That's not budgeting, it's a shell game. So I ask, where's the full-cost benefit analysis? The environmental impact report, long-term maintenance plan? Where's the evidence that this project serves more than a narrow special interest? Mayor, as you said, the devil is in the details, and in those details, we find risk, waste, and negligence. Council members, just because you can move forward doesn't mean you should. True leadership means knowing when to pivot. You still have a choice. Choose safety, choose transparency, and choose your residents. Do not destroy a neighborhood to serve a plan that's clearly broken from the start. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone who have signed in to speak. Kim, did you want to come up? You can.
Good evening. Okay, my friend and neighbor has just brought up a lot of points that, that I was going to make, but I would like to reiterate how this plan began and how it should have begun. According to the ODOT recommendations, that it should have begun with the residents on the street walking the street, discussing different plans before anything was drawn up as it was here. Number two, the, the, you know, the honesty with the letter, and I know, I know the administration feels like everything was followed to a T. You know, they sent the letter out, there was one meeting, but the letter just said bike lanes. It never said there will be a choice to vote on. So to me, that, that is probably like the biggest problem with this whole plan. Okay, so that's what I think going forward, because, I mean, if you do get the federal funds, we see this going forward. So I feel like, you know, for the future, really, you really need to change the method. You need to get out there in the street, meet the people. I really believe that if you all had walked Bunce Road at different times a day and see like how the kids are walking to school, a few of them ride their bikes, then it's fine, they ride on the sidewalk. To see the amount of traffic, it's just not a good placement. And I think had people taken that time and done that, it's easy to drive up and down Bunce because it's a freeway and everyone does. People forget it is our neighborhood. At any rate, that's what I would say, be upfront about it. Don't like hide the fact that you're talking about bike lanes when most people in a city like this would think you're talking about actual lanes in the street like every other street. So I feel there are some things that could be done. At this point, like those people at the, at the assisted living in those apartments that want to get across the street, it is dangerous to them. You've put in this push-button-walk thing for them. Do they have to wait two years? You drive up and you see these people in their walkers and wheelchairs, like, how are they getting across the street? Couldn't you find the money? I mean, you spent one point seven million already. Couldn't, couldn't someone find some money and put up a push-button-walkway for them now? Okay, that's one thing. E-bikes, oh my gosh, this kid came up on his e-bike that looks like a BMX bike. They've got the big helmets with the chin thing built in. And I asked the kid, how fast does this thing go? And he said thirty-one miles an hour, and he's on the sidewalk. Shocking to me, but I mean, it shouldn't be because these things are being marketed to kids. We got the, you know, they send for Christmas a catalog. Walmart has all the toys that kids, so kids can get excited and ask Santa for stuff. They had a ton of e-bikes marketed to kids, like seven or eight years old and up. And it's here. They're riding them. It's dangerous. I don't know, what are you going to do about that? I'm dubious. I mean, what's being done about speeding on our street? Not much. The, your speed is, is fine on the south end, but the one in my block is, it's put in a tree. The leaves prevent the, the battery from getting charged. What about the other side? The people, we're on the west side of the street. People come ripping up out of the get-go gas station. Let's have a sign where they can see how fast they're going. Let's have a little enforcement on our street. A, I ran out of time. This morning, I saw, I saw a six-axle semi-truck carrying Cure's Light Beer go up our street. That's not allowed. How about putting up on the traffic sign at the corner of Cliff, of Bunce and Detroit? No six-ton trucks and point up our street. I mean, this goes on day after day, cement trucks, the huge dump trucks going to the different construction sites. You know, help us out. How can you eliminate some of the traffic on our street? How about when they come out of the get-go, say no right turn, like CBS, like the library, like Drug Mart? What are you going to do for us? I hope you can do something other than put ten feet of asphalt, another roadway in front of our homes.
Okay, all right. Yes. All right, that's everyone. Anyone else that wanted to speak who did not sign in? Going once, going twice? All right, announcements from council members? Announcements from the administration? Speaking of Madison Park, there is a meeting tomorrow, as Matt mentioned, public meeting regarding the Futsal Courts at four thirty, at the Futsal Courts? Yeah, okay, at the Futsal Courts at Madison Park, so if you're interested in that, you can attend that. And no further business to come before council. Without objection, we are adjourned.